This is Delana. The topic is a discussion around Pearl, Rethalenda, and Resolution. We had this in the last meeting, we weren't ready to vote on it. There were a lot of questions that folks had around the specific language, how can we use it? Question on can we get there from here, even if we did pass a resolution, are we going to be ready to actually pass them in the vote on? And so I just think that we need to spend some time before talking to legislators, making sure we're comfortable with all our next steps today to date.
So a couple things. First of all, the proposition that's on here, I reviewed that with Travis Wyper, who's our auditor. He again reminded me that this election will have many candidates on it and potentially multiple issues on it. And he's encouraging all of the municipal partners to try to keep any language that they're adding to the ballot as brief, as succinct, as direct as possible because column space will be an issue. So I did share with him the word count for ours and the size, and he was very comfortable with that. He was uncomfortable with us going much longer, just because of his concerns for what else do we have to put on the ballot. So then I, I know Sean brought this up as one of his concerns on this meeting tonight. One of the things was can we be more specific in what it is that we're doing? So I'll look to add a couple of highlighted sentences here that speak more to the intent behind where dollars may be spent in, from a receipt standpoint. One of the things that we talked about in-house was developing a master playground plan that would actually lay out a scope of work to eventually replace all of our playgrounds with inclusive services. And I look at the current age of all the playgrounds and the structures that were on there, and just like we do with facilities master plan, actually develop a timeline for all of them so that we would be able to share that with constituents in the fall so that they would be able to see where those dollars would be spent and how much. Yes, Phil?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but with this one, it's different than like Pebble where once instituted, it's there for life, and is there a mechanism to remove it?
Yes, the board takes action.
And what would that be?
The board would take action and remove it.
Okay, so it would be...
It doesn't go back to the ballot, the board simply takes the...
It would be, and it would just be a simple board majority?
That's correct.
It wouldn't have to be any supermajority or anything like that?
No, it does not go back to the...
But it is, it is an effect going forward...
Right.
Forever unless taken down by, okay. Well, I think that that needs to be honestly conveyed to the public...
Absolutely.
And everything that way. And with our discussions on the Playground Committee, definitely there's...
How feasible is it to have a master playground plan in time to, you know, be specific? If we were to pass the resolution, move forward, we're going to have Pearl in November. I mean, and we're setting up a master playground. We need to make sure we have it and that we all agree to it and we understand what's in it. It's July 9th, and so I'm just curious, I mean, we've just met, I don't know where we are in terms of some of those standards that will...
Sure, so, I mean, a master playground plan wasn't, isn't really currently in charge of the committee.
Right.
You know, the goal is to have the standards and kind of rubrics in place and finalized by the beginning of October because that's when the next cycle of playgrounds comes up for consideration. And they're working on a lifecycle plan in terms of how often the playgrounds would need to be serviced and updated, but in terms of looking...
Well, we have, you know, we've got a playground lifecycle right now, but as far as, we don't, we don't refer to it as a, as a master playground plan, but, you know, like, like any building or piece of equipment has got a fixed, you know, it has a planned life, and we have a rotation going through and addressing that. You know, really, the charge of the Playground Committee is, is more to give guidelines for those playgrounds, that we want them to be inclusive, we want them to do all the social, emotional for all of our students, and, and that's really kind of our charge.
Would not those standards need to drive a master playground plan? I mean, I'm trying to see if there's a sequence here that we need to follow.
Yeah.
And again, my, my real question is how feasible is it for us to have this master playground plan in time to drive, you know...
Oh, simply feasible.
Yeah.
But this resolution isn't saying we will have it in that time.
I know, but if we're out talking to constituents around what we're going to use the money for, and we're referencing a master playground plan as something that we won't be using the funds to address, we'd have a plan.
So, because it's a question of what and when and how much are really the things that we need to be able to talk to people about, which is what we had to do with the facilities master plan, what, when, and how much.
Yeah.
And, and we feel pretty comfortable in having at least a fairly firm idea of a what coming out of the Playground Committee, knowing what some of those things look like in terms of surface, some of the play features that we know we need to add to those. So that allows us to help ballpark how much. And the when, as Phil said, we already have a lifecycle for, for the playgrounds. One of the things that's, when you look at the lifecycle of the playground, if there's a difference between replacing the surface and completely redoing the playground, and so that might change the timing in terms of when some of those projects may be done. But in our conversations with it, it wouldn't be a completed process, but we think that we would have enough information to be able to share with voters that would give them a pretty good idea of when we plan to do it, what a playground done under that process would look like, and an estimate for how much the cost would be so that you'd be able to see how many would be able to be done given here with the money that's available. So it would not be likely as concrete by the campaign type time as the facility master plan was, because obviously we started that much farther in front on...
Could we get maybe a one sheet or a half a sheet with that? So when we go out to constituents, we can have a few talking points, rubberized surfaces and inclusive play, you know, whatever it is. And then our, so previously we kind of said, well, maybe this could be used for X, Y, Z. Are we kind of narrowing that focus now?
Right, yeah, I had that too. You know, we, we started with a lot of discussion about preschool and things like that.
And just to be clear, I think there's some misconceptions in the community about saying that the money can be used for preschool, cannot be used for preschool. To be very clear that that's been stated multiple times, the money for Pearl cannot be used for preschool. What it can be used for is wraparound care, and it is being used for before and after school care in districts around the state. So that is consistent with current law and also...
Okay, well, is that, is, is that in here?
It's in the, it's certainly included in the proposition statement in terms of what you can use it for, but because that's included in that legislation, in the state statute, it's not up here. Again, what we did was, the conversation that took place at the last work session was about playgrounds, and so when I went back to bond council and said, what does this look like, these were the suggestions that they provided for us.
And what I was hoping to see by this point in time is, I was hoping to see more of those plan of like, you know, 30% of the proceeds would go to this purpose, 50% would go to this purpose, 20% to this purpose, you know, whatever the breakdown is. I feel like that's what I need to be able to talk to voters about attacks that goes on and on and on, because, you know, playgrounds, okay, so what about when the playgrounds are all done? Then what? So that's what I was hoping to see. Maybe I wasn't clear about that before. And maybe that changes over time, and maybe that's, I mean, I guess I need some feedback if that's not appropriate, if that's not the right approach to this.
Did you want that in the proposition or in the, I guess...
I want the board to be aligned on what that is so that we can be clear with the community what they're voting on. At this point, I feel like this, there's going to be a lot of confusion, and when there's confusion, people don't know, so...
And I know you discussed this in one of the earlier sessions, but it may simply just be premature, and may be two years too early.
Right. Well, and, and I think your points were taken about having the, showing where you want, where that money can go. One thing that, and I'm sure if we was here, if he was here and talking, he might say as well, you know, putting in playgrounds is like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. If you start at one end and we get to the other end, why do you have to go back and do that? Because, you know, with these, with, with as many elementary schools as we have, essentially we're going to be doing a new one every year, and with the surfacing and some of what we've gone through, 70, so what, 70% fail rate on installed surfaces by qualified installers don't meet. So, I mean, it's, we're, we're still struggling with a lot of the things in, in that, but...
But what portion of Pearl is going to go towards that purpose?
Well, that's, that's where I agree with, with your first statement about it needs to be defined, that, you know, if it's all going to playgrounds, that's one thing, but if you're talking about wraparound care and things like that, I think that's something that needs to be clearly expressed in, in a way that everyone, voters can understand that, okay, we're putting a section toward this, putting a section toward that, and that's, that's how we see it.
And be aware, if we create, if we start partitioning percentage for this and percentage for that, it's going to take years and years and years and years to ever get through all the playgrounds, for example, or would we have enough to provide the proper wraparound cares, we try to extend more and more preschools? I just, if we start parceling out to too many parties, we don't do anything very well very quickly.
Just a reminder too, right now, this levy generates about $800,000 a year, and the, the cost of the playgrounds is such that it would take us many years using just this as a revenue source.
Just pure loan and not being partitioned in the other...
Not being partitioned.
Yeah, but we, but we also budget for playgrounds right now. So it's not like we're going from zero to something. If we have that, this is a, this is a supplement to what we have existing.
This is not the one to get to that really inclusive vision that we have.
And if the board determines that that's how the money is to be used, then that's the board's decision. Pearl came up in the context of something else, not playgrounds.
Right.
So we just need to make a determination of what is the plan.
So when, when citizens are spending this on the playgrounds, what are they using the money for? Staff? Like, how are they spending it on the AASs? Because, you know, I mean, I think if we're, you know, I don't know how to say it, but if we're going to spend it all on playgrounds, it's going to free $800,000 up somewhere else that we can spend on some, something else, you know? But I think it's, you know, if, if it does go to support the AASs, I think that that's important to tell folks, and just, I don't know how that looks. And I don't know how prescriptive we want to get, it's going to change from year to year, but I think we should let people know. I mean, I think that would be a very popular thing to say, oh, we're supporting the AASs, I just don't know how, how that works.
Well, and this would be something for less, but the playground funding, I'm sure is coming out of Pebble or your building, it's not general fund.
Right.
And, you know, if, if this is something that can be used for wraparound care or something like that, that, to me, seems more a general fund type expenditure, so you're, you're kind of, it's not, it's the freeing up $800,000, it's, it may not be freeing up general fund that, that way.
May, may not, no.
But, you know, as far as what, what categorical funding it would, it would help, that's, that's a question that needs to be answered.
So whatever we approve here, the whereas, 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 that's what's going to show up physically on the ballot?
No, what shows up on the ballot is the, sorry, underneath by the proposition.
Just the proposition, okay.
Proposition. Whereas is our intention, our resolution to use these funds in these ways, and so that's sort of codified our intent for the funding. And so if we wanted to modify the resolution to add in something around use for, you know, wraparound services for preschool, so that that's out there as a category that we would be using, or could choose to use Pearl funds for, so we give ourselves that flexibility in the resolution, I mean, that, that could help us continue. But I'm feeling a little, what's the right word? That we're gonna, if we're looking for percentages, we're not going to get there in time.
That's why I'm sorry.
And then, but if we think, if we're fine with just directional whereas statements that we're, you know, executing on a master playground plan, and we're going to, you know, decide when to use Pearl for wraparound services for preschool, those are the two categories that we'll spend this money on, and we're comfortable with just that level of specificity in the resolution, then perhaps that's enough to talk to community members a bit about and say, you know, these are the two things we'll use Pearl for, and these are the two things that the community's been asking us for, and the two things we've been advocating for at the legislative level for years, at least around preschools, I mean, you know, it gives us something to talk about, but we will have to commit to get out there and talk about it, and advocate, get a team, and materials, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're going to have to sell this, I think it's tax. A lot of people don't like taxes, they're just old. 20% of our population is going to vote now just because of this tax, regardless of what it's used for. That's just right. So it's going to take a level of advocacy and support, and we, I think, we committed to that. So I don't know, how do y'all feel about adding a whereas in the resolution to see that we'd be willing and would like to be able to use the funds for preschool wraparound services, to give us that flexibility to have those two, two categories of spend?
Or the AASp.
I think the AASp would better, a better purpose. I mean, for multiple reasons, one of them being that we are not set up right now to use the funding for preschool wraparound. That would be fine, but, but, you know, the AASp.
That's a bug we got in the truck.
And, and also, I mean, there's other things that the funds can be used for, so, you know, maybe, I don't know. I'll be honest, I'm, I'm feeling nervous. I feel like we're really at a time crunch. I feel like that when I take something to the voters, like, like we did with the bond, we were very, very clear on what it was to be used for. And we could, we could be very decisive or very clear when we answer questions, if it will be used for this, it will not be used for that. And when we have this sort of, you know, it's not specified specifically, makes me nervous. I, I feel nervous having to sell that in the amount of time we have.
Yeah, I would agree with Lori. I'm more hesitant, because I, I thought we were going to use it for day, wraparound care, and this is a tax that will be on there until whatever sitting board decide, you know, longer needed. I would like the public to know all, as many of the items that we know that could be used, that we're able to talk about that and not sort of rush it to meet this deadline of giving it on the ballot in November. That's my personal concern, but I know I'm one of seven, I'm willing to go, but I, I have a huge concern that unlike the GOVon, we're starting in, what, August, maybe if we're lucky, getting out in front of voters for something in November. I don't think that's enough time to educate folks and to have the opportunity for people to come and do community meetings, listening polls, or all the things that we know. We have a wide variety of folks we have to reach out to.
Right.
And we're, we're just limiting that window to sort of only talk to a small percentage or a small minority or a majority that likes what some of the things we're going to use it on and we're saying, but not some of the things that we could use it on but haven't explored. I, I'm concerned.
Yeah, I'm concerned too. I mean, on the playground thing, I feel a lot better if we had these work completed in terms of standards, we had this plan in place, and we...
I think the difference, we talked about this, Ruthen and I talked about this a little bit, the difference for me, I think, the GEOVon was kind of do or die. You had this plan, you had these things that had to be done, and they only were going to get done if you passed the bond, right? This one, these are things that we really want to do. It's not, you know, if it doesn't pass, we can ask for it again, we can see why it didn't pass, you can spell it out, you can figure out the no and the why's and whatever, and go back out and re-ask it. To, for the GEOVon, that would have passed, to re-go out and do that, that would have put everything to a halt.
Yeah.
You know, raise the price.
I agree, but I don't know, it's, again, my own personal opinion, I don't like doing things half-assed. I feel like this is a...
Yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that...
Sorry to interrupt.
I think everyone's used to just the bond one, maybe with the exception of the Pebble tax, it was something we were involved in, in the Pebble. You were involved with the Pebble, or, so maybe the rest of us, when it passed, the last time.
Yeah.
So the rest of us all want to really know, is the GEOVon, which was a giant, huge statement we did.
I'm with you, but I, I'm, I'm, you know, I confess a bit of a cynicism, so I just don't, I just don't think that we've done the proper preparation to take this.
And like Steve commented, you know, we might be two years too early.
Right.
Yeah.
And we talked about that the first time we brought it up.
We, we discussed it, you know, and that, and if, and believe me, if we don't, if we're not 100% on board going forward with it, you think the public is going to, you know, convince us?
And if we go forward and ask taxpayers for, for money, I want to be rock solid, crystal clear, and have it pass.
Yeah.
You know, because the commitment and it's so well articulated, and I get that it's not the same bar call as the GEOVon, but I don't want to kind of be half A about it and, and not have it pass, and then, but just remember, there's that school board that ran it back again, and it's going to be not, well, you know...
Then I guess, I think we should make a decision, because we keep dragging things on, and we kind of have put ourselves behind at least, how long have we talked about this? So like, if we don't want to go forward, we should decide that tonight, or if we want to go forward, we should decide that tonight, because...
I agree, and I was just saying that this is a not go forward.
Because like, we just keep kicking the ball down the road.
And we kept kicking it down, and, and because it would, we could always kind of pull back and go to pass the resolution and then still not put the, the ballot out, I mean, so we, we had these points where we could retreat, if we will, but I'm going to, I mean, and I'm sensing from your directors' inputs that we're not far enough along in our planning, we're maybe two years too early.
I, I thought we would have had that plan by now, so when we brought it up earlier, that's what I, that's where I expected us to be at this point. So now I feel like, yeah, since we're not there, we should just...
Right. Let's, um, sorry. So September 11th is when we have to get it to the auditorium.
Two months.
Yeah.
And let's be clear, we've got a busy two months ahead. The numbers changing, opening, so...
Well, and then, you know, the, the community engagement part of it and everything like that, trying to get people, you know, before schools in session and everything like that when, you know, everyone's doing their summer term, so it's going to be, yeah, it's going to be possible.
So are we agreed we're not pushing this board anymore? Pearl is now effectively on the backlog.
I would like to, to maybe decide what the plan is and have a set timeframe of when we're going to have the plan, so it doesn't continue to just be this...
That's the one thing I'd ask about, I mean, you guys have considered it, and I think, you know, I was here as a principal the first time this was considered, and the same thing, decided not to take it forward. I mean, we have very few revenue sources we can go access, and so if it's in all of consideration, I would say at least keep talking about it, let's get a plan for the future moving forward and not just ignore it, so...
Let's talk about a drop off retreat then, on the 20th, and talk about...
I mean, at this point, I think it would be, yes, I agree we should continue to talk about it, but there's also going to be an election for four seats in November, and now you're going to have four new voices come onboard. That's one of the first things you talk about, that'd be fine, but, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to continue to talk for this board to something that may not happen, if that makes sense, for a vote that's not going to happen for two years.
Can we set a timeframe though? Can we say that...
Set a timeframe, I'm just saying, I don't know.
Our expectation is that...
Do all this work.
This plan will be in place, will be, I mean, these are the steps that we need to get to the plan, and be expectant that we can have that by, I don't know...
We'll obviously need a lot of direction from you, because the reason that Playground is on there is that's what you asked for at the last meeting, so if we want something different, that's perfectly fine, we can put that together for you, but we're going to need really specific, concrete direction from the board about these are the things that we want to see in the plan.
I mean, I guess I'd want to spend this money on whatever we can spend it on. I mean, I don't, you know, to me, I'd like it to be...
That's the resolution we wrote.
Yeah.
Right.
We asked, we asked council, write us the resolution that allows for every expenditure that is available under state statute. So that's what that does.
And so maybe...
But what we don't have is we don't have a facilities master plan that says, because that's the way that we wrote the general obligation bond and the revenue purpose statement also was as broad as possible. The difference is, we spent two years planning the, the needs, and then once the, the what was defined, then the how was, we're going to get it through general obligation bond, and so that was a much easier sell, if you will, because everyone knew what the what was. So you could do that with this process, which is go through and develop a what, and then you use this same resolution that's right here, you don't have to write a new one, but you have a what. So whether it's a Pearl master plan or whatever it is that you look at...
And then, do you reference any...
But it says, this is, this is how much it costs for the playgrounds, and we're going to take this percentage of it from Pearl, and this is what we want to do with wraparound care, or this is what we want to do with BASP, and this is what we want to do with all these other things that you can spend it on, and, and lay that out. Now you have a clearly defined what, then that is just like the revenue purpose statement, very broad. But now you're not, you're not selling that, you're selling the what.
The plan, yeah.
Right? The difference is, a facility master plan is a bunch of stuff that's out there, but this is going to be a lot of disparate pieces. Playground don't look or sound like before and after school care or other things that you could spend it on, so I think you're going to, there's going to be more wrestling to figure out what the what is. And I think that's what the board has to commit to, is deciding what's the content.
And that's work that we have to do, to wrestle to...
Right, but I'm just saying it's July, and there's a lot of things on our plate that we really would like to get through as a board together, so we have that part of it on to right now, I'm just saying, we got to commit and do it.
And I just don't think it's realistic, it's the 29th.
That's what I'm saying.
And so, so I think we're agreeing, correct me, and I hear what you're saying, Matt, we can't hurt you, we need to find the revenue streams, totally get that, totally, but we do, we do need to, as a board, commit to creating the what, the plan or whatever, that then we can use in the next round of, of what we can bring out, the goal, the value, something to write right now.
I don't think it needs to be the extensive process of the facility master plan, I mean, that was, you know, over time, how many millions of dollars? I mean, the bond itself was only 200, but, you know, the whole plant was, I mean, this is $800,000 a year, so let's keep it in, let's keep our efforts proportionate to what the amount of money is. But to get it to pass, we have to have some information, so we don't have right now.
So specificity. So we're going to pass on taking this board to the next, not the next meeting, in that board retreat, we talked about whether these are plans to get to that level of specificity, maybe we decide as a team that we want to wait past the election and see what we can do with this, like, and take it on then, or maybe we want to roll up our sleeves and ask the existing board, work on it, you know, as a priority for the next four years, somebody can discuss that in August. Does that sound fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Bill, for all of your work and coming over the, the tier of the resolution together, getting Travis's input.
I don't think it's a waste of time, I think...
I don't think so.
No, we're going to need an audience.
Yep.
So next up is the plan and resolution.
Can I ask, before you leave that, you know, it was an offer at the beginning, and I hate it when I create my work myself, but the playground master plan, is that something that you're still interested in even though, okay? I just didn't, I wanted to be clear, I just didn't want to walk away thinking, yes, on the shelf too.
I do feel like we need those standards that the committee is working on, but I do think those standards are important than that foundation for creating the plan, and we prioritize...
I think that's, I think that's the right way to say this, once we have the standards, it would be difficult to do all at the same time, so the work of the committee is to do the standards and that, and then from there. I think that's the right way to say this, once we have the standards, it would be difficult to do all at the same time, so the work of the committee is to do the standards, and add, and then from there, that would have to be the next chapter of the next, because the-
It's integrating that into our existing life cycle.
Yeah, and it's quite frankly, it's a different task, so it might not be the task of the people that are currently on the table, but I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at it right.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, James. Okay, we're on to the climate action resolution, um, and we had a revised document put in front of us from the conversation that occurred at our last board meeting. Um, and directors have a chance to review, any comments, questions, suggestions for edits?
Yeah, I had one on, uh, okay. And the one that I suggested, where we took our, be it further, uh, resolved that the district developed curriculum and educational opportunities in areas such as climate change, climate literacy, climate advocacy, and then I just added, and sustainable agriculture. And, and the other one, it's pretty much the same, but then the impacts of sustainable agriculture on the climate. I don't know, I think that that's, that's putting a little, that's putting a little spin on it that, uh, I didn't really intend. Sustain, I mean, uh-
I was trying to tie it into climate.
No, 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 I understand, well, but, but agriculture, agriculture is civilization, it is, uh, our climate, that's why Iowa, uh, has more oxygen available than other areas, because we have so many cornfields that produce more oxygen than forests. So, I, you know, I, I, I just, I just thought that, you know, and, I just thought the, the statement for what the community was coming to us with, was met with the first one, and, uh, you know, I, I thought sustainable agriculture was, was a good addition to it without the impacts of sustainable agriculture, that's, that's just-
I, I'm fine with that, I was, I was taking what I heard and trying to then connect it to climate, uh, with an understanding that this was a climate change resolution.
Right. And, and I, and I tried to make the example of, you know, when we, and, and I experienced this in, in high school vocational agriculture, when we were going from clean plowing to conservation tillage. And that was a generational shift, because we went from a highly erative practice to one that was very, uh, was, was, and also required less passes across the fields, it's conserve fuel, it conserves soil, uh, it was cost-effective for inputs, it increased profitability. But that was something that was an educational thing that, at every high school, that, that young farmers went to at that time, in their coursework, were persuaded against what granddad and what dad was advocating. You know, you, you wanted to have that as good as, you know, you want to have it as clean as a garden. No, you don't. You want to have stocks, and you want to have residue on top, because it creates dams, and when you get these big gully washers, it doesn't wash all that beautiful Iowa topsoil down the river and ends up in Louisiana.
That's the impact, isn't it?
So, um, for me, I don't know, I, I thought the sustainable part was, was good enough without, with that, but-
Are there other benefits of sustainable agriculture beyond climate?
Oh, sure.
So then, so then, I think the, creating the, 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 the impact, or the role of sustainable agriculture on climate, or, or something, I mean, I think, given sustainable agriculture is a big thing, there's a subcomponent of benefits related to, to that climate action, or, um, I, I think that's what you were trying to call out, yeah.
That's what I was trying to do, I was, I was just trying to tie a nexus to it, because everything else was about climate, and, and I think where you were going, Phil, was the impact that sustainable agriculture has on climate, so that it's tied to the intent of the resolution, because otherwise it looked, um, independent of the resolution itself. There's a lot of other things you could put in there that also have an impact on climate, and then I think it starts to beg the question, why aren't those in there too? And why is, why is one called out and not another? We don't, we don't talk about forestry in here. You could, you could have forestry right next to sustainable agriculture, so part of what I was trying to do was, because I, I looked at it from the standpoint, and, and I am, I, there's no ownership on here, I literally was just trying to take those other resolutions and put them together, but you have a big overarching issue, climate literacy, climate change, climate advocacy, and then you have a small component, sustainable agriculture. So again, large, large, small.
Well-
Why not forestry, why not aquaculture, why not, why not, why not?
Well, that's, that's all agriculture. You know, forestry falls under the agricultural umbrella, uh, but when, when I first put that in, it, it was from the students directly saying, there was no educational courses we were offering that had anything to do with climate. And the example in the ag education for the first year was a study on alternative fuel sources, and it was exactly what the kids were talking about. And that's what I was trying to direct, is, is that we had a class, we were promoting, we were trying, we, that was in the coursebook, that we were gonna roll out, that was specifically what the kids were asking for. And that was the example that was used in the, in the coursebook. So that's, that's, that's where, that's where I felt that it was important to have, have that, but if you, that's, that's fine, I'm, I'm not kind of belated point on that, if that's, if that's where, if the, if everyone else is fine with that, I guess, you know, I'll-
Like I said, I've got no prior ownership on this at all, I'm happy to amend that to whatever the board thinks is inappropriate application for that.
I really like all the changes, I think, you know, as far as those little wordsmithing things, you know, that, I don't have a strong opinion on it, but I really like a lot of the other things that were changed from the initial to this one. I do too.
The, and then I guess I have, um, an environmental assessment, um, I think is important. And that looks not just, so much of this is, is framed under carbon. And a environmental analysis, or a life cycle, uh, analysis, would also look at the potential hazards and waste with some of the, uh, proposed carbon changes. And I, you know, there, there's big examples out in California where they're pulling back on their solar pushes because of the waste that is created with cells that have reached their life cycle.
Uh, the, uh, let me count.
And I, and I guess that's, and, and I'm, I'm-
About halfway down, um, you see it, it says, be a further resolved that the district engage with energy consultants to develop a baseline of current energy use method renewable resources, determine the life cycle costs of current and future energy, uh, renewable energy projects, use that data to set targets to increase renewable energy sources, and provide annual updates to the board, so, uh, try to-
But I think it's important to have an, an, uh, environmental assessment, an environmental impact on, on it, in, uh-
Would you put another clause right after that, that would say, uh, so after determine the life cycle costs of, of current and future renewable energy projects, complete, uh-
Environmental-
Environmental assessment.
Environmental assessment with scope which is include, not limited to, all related, and then you get into your other, you know, your transportation and those things. I, I think that that's important to have.
So let's get specific on the language, because I'm hoping that we can agree tonight on the resolution language, so that we can put that as an action.
Could you just say, determine the life cycle costs of current, future renewable energy projects, conduct an environmental impact assessment, comma, use that data to set targets? Just write it in there?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think that captures, and this is, we're gonna get the, we're gonna do the assessment, and we're gonna use that assessment data to define our targets.
Because then we're not just looking at whatever the renewable energy savings is, but the entire life cycle, the total cost of ownership, which is, I think, what you're getting at.
And it's the recognizing that could be unintended consequences.
Yes, and that's what, uh, the engineers that I were, I was speaking to, which are many generations younger than me, who are, and, uh, you know, are, studied this stuff in colleges, is that, you know, you have to look at the environmental impact, uh, over time.
And my question is, that language, environmental impact assessment, does that capture?
Sure.
I, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, is that what we're trying, because I hear what you're saying, you want to, it's not just the energy savings, it's what are you gonna do with the things you throw away?
Yeah, so determine the life cycle costs of current and future renewable energy projects, conduct an environmental impact assessment of renewable energy sources, and use that data to set targets. Something like that.
Because I had another engineer look at this, and he said, you know, if, if the utilities put in nuclear power plants, you meet everything that's in here. If you don't have the environmental life cycle impact with it, because if all you're going is to reduce carbon, nuclear power plants meet that a hundred percent, beat it better than solar.
Sure.
But, do you want to have nuclear power plants all around our, our state? That's, and, 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 and so that's-
Yeah, so I would say, do you want an impact assessment, would include that sort of-
So the clause I added was, conduct an environmental impact assessment, I inserted that between the addition of determine the life cycle costs, and then the use that data.
Perfect.
And I would say, ju- just what you said, environmental impact assessment, because that's broader.
Right.
And that's not just-
So we look at what are the life cycle costs, but then we also look at what's the environmental, uh, impact, because that may be different.
It's the balance of those, of impact.
Well, and, and also, we can do a lot, uh, by just planting more trees, with, with, with this too, and, and-
And again, that helps with the assessment, and it's, that might not show up in the interview, but, yeah.
What else?
Um, okay. And, you know, the, the menu planning, I think that that's important, I think it's also important that, you know, we, we are somewhat hand-strung by the federal government when it comes to-
USDA, Allison has brought that up to me on several occasions since we first had this conversation.
And, and so, you know, it, it, and, and I know we do, uh, tremendous with locally grown and, and those types of things, bringing those in, and that, but I think it's also important that whatever language we have, we recognize that, you know, the federal government does tend to mandate, what, you know, what are meant, you know, have, have good, huge impact into what our menu is, uh, and that, and, uh, it's, it's gonna be part of that, but, you know, I, I, and if we wanted to put in there something too, uh, that the district will, you know, with our sustainable agriculture, will maintain its, uh, its, uh, utilization of locally grown, locally grown foods, which fit very well into a smaller carbon footprint, less, you know, less mileage, other food to the end user, that type of thing.
So could you say, the district, um, developed initiatives, include sustainable agricultural practices, many kind of food reduction programs?
Utilizing existing-
Utilizing local-
Locally grown food when, when feasible.
When practicable, yeah, yeah.
And, and I'm okay with that, but I also feel like that's covered, and when it's that sustainable agriculture, I feel like, I don't feel like it has to be specified.
That's okay. All right. Okay.
My opinion?
Yeah.
That, that, because there's many other things, you could, comma, and this, comma, and that, and, you know.
Right, right. And of course, I'm gonna put in a push, uh, because, uh, you know, I think it's, we will, eventually, uh, we will stop using Roundup and Glycosade as chemical trimming of our property. Uh, it will happen, and it will either be something that we do before we're forced to, or we will be forced to. And, uh, I think if you're making a statement, and you're saying that, you know, we're gonna do all these things, we're addressing these, these things, but yet you're still spraying around, uh, stop signs, and edges of buildings, and hard surfaces, and things like that, uh, and it goes against, uh, some of what we had in IPM, where you're supposed to go the least hazardous and work your way up to, uh, that, that action level. Um, you know, we can do it by mechanical trimming. We can allow, you know, two inches of, of growth before we trim it down. Um, I, I feel that, I feel strongly that that's something that, uh, whether you say we stop using it, but we will, we will make every effort to curtail our use of Roundup and Glycosade. I mean, the first thing that McKinsey or someone in the fiscal plan says, well, what are we gonna do for poison ivy? Well, you don't have to spray the whole thing, cut it back, you, you get down to the stump, and we can spray the stump, okay. The amount of chemical needed is very la, is very minimal, for that example. But when you spray around stop signs, and, you know, the whole thing with the reading tree at Shinnick, and spraying the big death circle around the school, around the tree, that the cats, that the kids sat under to read, um, I think we should be proactive, and we should be out, out in front of that, so I'd like to see something in there, uh, for us to go toward what, Canada, New York State, and what many countries have gone to, and that's not used, so.
And there is a reference, the last, the second, the last, uh, item possible district to, in, 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 in my opinion, of the recommendations in the climate action plan. So as long as that IPM meeting, and setting these standards, and setting whatever the goals are for reduction of those kinds of chemicals that you were describing, this resolution is saying, those recommendations have to be based into the climate action plan. So, without this resolution specifying all those things, I think that we've got a committee that's doing that work, and-
Well, the committee is, it's, the, the committee is not the committee of what, uh, it was, it was, uh, and, uh, when we were meeting, there wasn't, uh, any US lawsuits that had ruled against Roundup and Glycosade, which now, that's, that has happened, so-
So can now the committee continue to work and take those-
The committee, the committee is not, like I said, they, there was a, there was an update on the committee, I went to it, and, uh, they're not, uh, they're not discussing that. Uh, but, uh, that's, like I say, that's, that's my personal feeling is, is that I, 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 I feel we should have, we should have, have it in there that we are, we are going towards zero use. That, that should be, I mean, we're, we're, we're saying we're gonna go, uh, we're gonna set targets, and we're gonna go toward reducing that, uh, without saying, uh, we're gonna, we're, we're not gonna go toward, uh, elimination of a, of a chemical we're spraying on grounds, on, on grounds that kids play in and run their fingers through, and, and that, uh, it, uh-
To my personal opinion, I'm uncomfortable referencing recommendations in my opinion, not getting a specific, this, this, Phil's just having, that's my opinion.
I mean, I don't know how specific, you know, to get, I would hope that IPM is headed that way, that we're challenging use of that, and getting down to the, as a rule, I think, I don't think we should use it, and I, I do think there's something to be it, except in the cases of, you know, super specific, poison ivy, or some stuff that you really have to drill down on, I can't, so.
Can we have the language where we're at now, and I know we have to do some revisions based on, on the data that we're going to get from the studies?
Yeah.
And then at that point, um, I, I don't know if it's possible to reach out to IPM, to see where they're at on their recommendations, and then for us to make a hard, a decision on how specific at that time can we want to be, or leave that language as is, or what? do we wanna be, or leave that language as is, or what, I mean, is, that gives an opportunity to get more information, or give IPM sort of the word that we want recommendations, so that way we can be as specific with the new revised resolution that's going to be coming, when we add our dates and reductions in.
I mean, I, I think that's a great idea, I also think the IPM committee is not working the way it should, it's not addressing the topics that need to be addressed, and it's, I mean, that's the group that needs to be targeting these things. And again, if they, if we need to jumpstart that committee to get them more active and focusing on these new, uh, legal matters, Phil, then that, for me, is the venue that we need to be pushing on.
Sure.
And not, and leaving that in here is the committee that's gonna promote recommendations that this resolution's gonna adhere to, but if we need to jumpstart IPM, we need to jumpstart IPM, make sure they're having the right discussions and answer some of the asks of-
Well, yeah, and, and one of the, one of the things in IPM, when we were doing it, is, is that we were not going to be making, uh, decisions solely on economics. And why we use chemicals trimming is economics, it's not because there isn't another way we can, we can do it safer, and it eliminates, uh, that chemical on our grounds, uh, it's, we're purely making an economic decision on that. So I would, I would agree if we wanna go to the, uh, to Dave, who's our IPM czar, and have him explain that, I think that'd be great.
Okay, so we're leaving this as is, we're gonna reconnect with Dave on the IPM, and then we've got December 31st as a reboot, a revision already slated, um, for this document based on the, all the data that we've selected here.
If you look at this, one of the things that I did was I actually tried to write this such that you wouldn't have to redo the resolution. So if you, uh, if you look at the second to the last one, I, it, uh, says that the district, uh, uh, we're missing a will in there, will develop a, uh, or be a further resolved that the district develop a climate action plan with specific targets, because that, one of the concerns that I had as I was looking at this was, I think that when my conversations with Eric Giddens, up at U and I about this climate action plan, there's gonna be a lot to this, that you're not going to wanna put in a resolution. So I changed it to direct us to have this done prior to that, and I think based on my conversation with Eric, he's pretty confident about that, we've gotta fill the dates, and he's out of the office right now, but he's, he was, and I told him that we wanted it no later than the end of the year, he said absolutely. So that would prevent you from needing to go back and revise the resolution, but then focus on the details that come out of that U and I study. So it'd just save you a step of that process.
That's good. Okay, anything else on that resolution, are we comfortable with the board voting on that next, uh, board meeting, as an action? That's fantastic, that's great progress, really thanks, everyone clearing up this along the way.
I'll label that 3.2, get it revised, and then be ready to post.
Awesome, that's really good, anything else on that topic?
I, I would just say, um, I know it's a, I thought, like, could we put something up on the website, like, you know, kind of a trigger, this is happening?
I'll have Kristen do some PR pushout.
Maybe you don't need to do like a district-wide email or anything.
No, but she can use social media.
At the top of the list on social, on, sorry.
She can make sure it goes out on all the social media feeds.
Just cross it with a J.
All right, is there wish to adjourn, if you'll move, or favor? All right, thank you.